All right, the time is now six o'clock. I'm going to call to the Committee of the Whole for September 22nd, 2025, to order. Clerk Boak, could you please do the roll?
Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Spatafor, Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Palivinoglu.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Seven members present.
Okay. Next, we have the minutes. Vice President Carter.
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the September 8th minutes as presented.
Okay, proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously. All right, next, we are on to public comment on agenda items. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. If you could please state your name for the record. We do have one online participant. City TV, are we ready to roll with that one first? Okay, so we're going to go to folks in the audience first.
Okay, on your proposed budget priorities, as they were presented in the current documentation, we have $620,000 that I consider to be unnecessary expenditures planned. $100,000 for a housing legal assistant, $80,000 for a focus on small businesses, minorities and female owned, $250,000 for facade improvements, $40,000 for an RFP for a community facilities plan, $50,000 for citizens complaints, $50,000 for a process for citizens to make a complaint. Can't they just pick up a phone and call or send an email or stop in in person if they can find where anyone is located anymore by going through 311 and not getting any specific answers? DEI issues, $100,000 to redevelop non-motorized transportation plan for pedestrian safety focus. You know what I do not see? I don't see one friggin' thing for funding LPD better than it is, staffing LPD better than it is, equipping LPD better than it is, and the same with LFD. Those two should be our first and second priorities. We had at least three times that I heard over the weekend on a scanner where there were no officers available citywide to respond to a call, and at least twice that there were no medics available to respond to a call. We also have a situation where there's not always appropriate equipment available. For example, on the river trail, there was a shooting recently, and the LPD rigs could not get in, the LFD rigs could not get in. They ended up having an LPD pickup truck be able to maneuver into where the gunshot wound victim was located about 20 minutes after the call came in because it took that long first to find them and then second to get to them. So there needs to be other provisions for access as much as the river trail is being used and as much crime occurs on it. There needs to be a better plan in place for how the police and fire can access people on the river trail when there's an injury or a shooting or a stabbing or whatever the situation may be because there are places where foot bridges and other obstructions limit their access. I took a golf cart out of the city barns and drove the golf cart up there hoping that that would be a help to them, but by the time I could get there with it, they had found a way out. So there are a lot of issues here that need a lot more attention than those $620,000 priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else here for public comment?
Hi, Samantha Vave. I signed up on the sheet, but we're here to speak for the Anishinaabe Friendship Center, so we're here if you need us.
Great, thank you. Okay, do we have any other public comment?
I've been hearing a lot about this budget. Demaria Beard. Can I start now? I've been hearing a lot about this budget situation, and the issue is not that people can't get down to 311, that people can't go down six floors to see Joseph McDonald. The problem is that you can't get down to the Capitol at all right now. Why can't you get down to the Capitol? The issue is not that the fire department is not helping those in need. The issue is not that the police department is not helping those in need. The issue is that fire alarms are going off at 3200 South Washington, Capital City Apartments, every single day. Every single day, the residents are pulling that fire alarm in Oliver Gardens, the senior citizens, the disabled, the black people, the brown people, the people who can no longer work, the people who are on Section 8 housing. Why is that? A lot of you have at-large underneath your name tags. We will remember that in November. There are a lot of issues going on in the city. This word budget is not just being talked about in this room, it's being talked about at the Capitol. It's being talked about in the streets, it's being talked about in our hallways that are still filled with bedbugs, that are still filled with rodents, that are still filled with electrical issues, that don't have security guards on the weekends, but Jennifer can still look at the cameras 24/7, but Betty can look at the cameras 24/7. You all have done a lot here. Crunching numbers. I walked 16 minutes from Washington and St. Joseph to get to 311, but when I filled out that waitlist, it says Section 42, it didn't say Section 8. I have that paperwork if you would like to look at it later. HUD is written across the paperwork that Michigan Asset Group gives out. You should look into that because I've been calling Lansing Housing Commission, I called my state Senator Sarah Anthony, I called Kara Hope, my House of Representatives, and I came here today. I hope that you realize that there's a lot at stake here, and it's not just those numbers in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Julie Pingston, and I'm the president and CEO of Choose Lansing. Just came tonight in support of Tracy Kent's appointment to the LEFFA Board of Commissioners. She's a very long-term member of the hospitality and tourism industry, and we're supportive of her being on the LEFFA Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments? And do we have the online comment? No. Okay. So then we are going to move on then to Item 5, Discussion Action. First up, we have the community funding request for the annual traditional powwow. I believe we have Samantha here for that. If you want to come on down to the microphone, just give us, yep, absolutely, and just share with us a little bit about your event and what it is and what you would like from us.
Thank you, council. My name is Samantha Vave. I live in Lansing, and this is Asia Washington, she also lives in Lansing. She's the founder of the Anishinaabe Friendship Center. I'm one of the board members, and Asia's going to tell you a little bit about the center and the powwow.
Hi, everyone. Traditionally, Lansing is a gathering place for our people. It's called Nkwejang, where the rivers meet. So having this powwow in Lansing is very important to our people to have a gathering, and people are coming from all over. People are coming from Canada, people are coming from all over the state to come and join us here. We haven't had a center in Lansing since 1999, so we're bringing the powwow back for our community gathering to give trust back to the families that are here. We have 300-plus families in the Lansing area alone, so our ultimate goal is to get a center here back in Lansing, but this powwow, excuse me, this powwow is going to be very important for us to bring that back every year, to bring everybody together as a gathering.
So the powwow is a free event. It is open to the entire community. We personally invite each and every one of you to come. I know Mayor Shore will be there on Sunday. We're very excited to have him there as well. It is a great opportunity to learn about another culture, a culture that is indigenous to this area, but it's also a fun time with your friends to eat great food and buy cool crafts and just a nice thing to do in Lansing. LCC has generously donated the Ganon ramp so that parking is easily accessible and free to the community. So as we've mentioned, this is a free community event. We are a very, very, very small and new nonprofit, and everything we are doing, all of the scraping and clawing and everything we are putting together goes into making this free event possible. So we are here with a couple of requests. The first is we are asking for the $500 community fund donation. That money, every single penny, will go to this powwow. You will see where it goes if you show up at the powwow this weekend. One of the major hurdles to putting on this event is the expense of renting a dodo park, which is a little bit bothersome because a dodo park is the ancestral powwow grounds. This is where the powwow would be happening if colonization didn't happen, and the fact that it costs us thousands of dollars to rent the park to put on a free event that is a culturally significant event, and then it costs us thousands of dollars for electricity and water in that park, it's just, it's disheartening. So we are also asking that the council considers doing, either waiving the fee or doing a reimbursement of the fee after we pay. We do pay upfront for the park, but the water and electricity we pay afterwards once they know how much we have generated. But I believe last year, the cost to rent the park plus the water and electricity was upwards of $5,000, which is a huge chunk of our budget to put on this event. And finally, we plan to do this every year forever as it should happen. As Asia mentioned, you know, this is an urban native center, meaning that we are more than an hour from any reservation, or more than an hour from traditional medicine services, from cultural services, and there really isn't a place in Lansing for the indigenous community to gather, and this provides at least a temporary space while we are working on putting together this center. So as we hope and plan to do this event in perpetuity, we are hoping to at least create an intention with the city that there will be an ongoing relationship to support this powwow. I understand that budgets get approved every year, and no one knows what the future holds, but at least that there's some intentionality that the city will continue to support this event. And then with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Jackson.
How many people are you expecting? Oh, and also, can you give the details of the event for the people listening?
Yes, please.
Last year, we had 3,000 to 5,000 people, not all at once, but throughout the weekend. We had, like I said, we had people from all over. We had people from Canada, we had people from Michigan, we had people from Wisconsin and Minnesota and.
Iowa.
Iowa. We had people come from all over to gather with us. So we had, we had drums that were here from out of state.
Yeah, so the grand entry thing.
Oh, yes, sorry. Saturday, grand entry is at noon. We also have a second grand entry at 6:00. That is where we welcome all of our dancers in, and we start all of the traditional songs. We do invite the community to come out and dance, so it's not only an indigenous event. Anyone is welcome to come dance with us. Sunday, we will also have a grand entry at noon.
Just some helpful hints about that if you've never been to a powwow before. So you definitely want to be there for a grand entry because it's when you get to see everyone in their regalia, and it's very cool. So I do recommend getting there. If you're going to come for the noon grand entry, come about 30 minutes early so you can get settled in. We do have seating for elders, for anybody who needs a special place to sit.
We have limited seating.
We do have limited seating, but there's, you're welcome to bring a chair. Rule of thumb, never touch anybody's regalia. Don't refer to it as a costume, and.
Come hungry.
Come hungry. The food will be great. Oh, that was the other thing. If you hear the term intertribal, that means everybody's welcome. So I'll be out there, we'll all be out there. You don't have to know how to do the dance, you just come join the circle. There's also, we'll be doing some events for kids. We do a candy toss, so any kids can go out there, and we have non-sugar options as well, but it's a really fun event for kids. We also have a play village for kids as well.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes, just real quick, and I guess I'm just, I'm kind of thinking out loud here. There is precedent for us increasing the amount that we're supporting in terms of the frank costs above 500, and I think typically when we've seen this body go above 500, it's typically to 1,000. So I think we could do that, and so the IDV would be, instead of 500, would be 1,000 to parks. And obviously, that'd have to be baked into the resolution. I think the other piece is that each council member can work respectively with this group, and there are office holder accounts that can be considered or leveraged to support. Some of the other things you guys are asking, it's administrative in nature in terms of waiving of fees and things like that, so you'd have to work with the night floor on that, but I do think there's some ways that we can collectively kind of support and then maybe respectively. So I guess it's a suggestion that maybe we consider increasing the amount to 1,000.
So is that a friendly amendment to this?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any objections? Okay. Do we have any further questions? All right, so Vice President Carter, could we get a motion?
I will make a motion, amended motion, with amended motion of the resolution for community funding request, the Anishinaabe Friendship Center Annual Traditional Powwow in the amount of $1,000.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously. All right. We appreciate you both for coming.
Thank you so much. Yeah. We hope to see you this weekend.
Great. Okay, next, we are on to Item C, the appointment of Tracy Kent at large for the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority Board of Commissioners, term to expire June 30th, 2028, and I believe Tracy is here. If you want to take a seat, share a little bit about yourself if you would like, make sure the green light's on, and then why you want to serve on this board.
Sure. Thank you very much, members of the council. Yes, so my name is Tracy Kent, and I am here seeking consideration to fill the at-large vacancy on the LEFFA Board of Commissioners. I grew up here in Michigan. I moved to the Lansing area in the 90s to attend Michigan State University, graduate of the School of Hospitality, and since then, the last 20 years, I've spent managing local Marriott hotels, and I feel I'm interested in serving. I serve on the Choose Lansing Board of Directors, so I've been very vested in the Lansing Center, Lugnuts and Grosspect, for the number of years that I've been involved in that organization. And I think I can bring to the group kind of an expertise of the hospitality and tourism industry. So much happens in the city that really has a huge economic impact on tourism and travel to our region, and I think I have a very strong understanding of creating that welcoming experience for guests and visitors. I also think that it would help strengthen the image of the community, and then I do have an understanding of managing the resources and budgets that would come with those facilities. The gals that were just here for the annual powwow, that's a group that comes to Lansing, and we've had groups at our hotels from that, so it was a nice tie of how things that occur here in Lansing really support all of us in the hospitality industry. So, thank you for your consideration.
Okay, do we have questions? Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President, and I appreciate you being here and your role in this to serve. I guess this question, question is for maybe the administration. I'm not sure exactly, I know this is a regional position, but how far does that region stretch out outside of Lansing? I see that you live in Langsborough, so.
I do, yes.
That is probably in the state statute that sets these up. Greg's shaking your head, no, it's not.
City Attorney?
Thanks. So there's, we're talking about LEFFA Board, there's no specific geographic requirement for either residency or business interests other than the way that the appointments are made, except for the Articles of Incorporation, but the statute doesn't require that, and the articles don't require, at least for this one, they don't require any residency. It just requires that the person, I mean, is in that large position, are they fit to serve, do they have the experiences and education that would assist the board in that, in their endeavors? So there's no specific geographic requirements, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Or if that answers the question, I should say.
Yeah, I just, I just, for future reference, I guess, I mean, so you're saying some of that lives in Escanaba could serve if they could get here every day?
Sure. I don't know that someone from Escanaba would realistically either seek appointment or make it through vetting, but conceivably, yes.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Okay. We have any other questions for Tracy? I guess I can ask a couple of questions. How do you see LEFFA working with ASM? What does that role look like as a board member?
That, the, I guess the appointment of Legends Global, I find interesting because I am a franchisee hotelier, so all of my experience is working with management companies. So I think it's going to be a fantastic outlook. I think that they're going to bring in a lot of that standard operating procedures and things to the group. I still feel that LEFFA is going to be important in ensuring that we're getting locally what we're hoping for out of them and their appointment, but I think having a management company that does this on a, you know, greater scale outside of our community is going to be extremely helpful.
Great, and then I know you work on the board for Choose Lansing. So what would be for you, you know, when serving on LEFFA, some creative ideas, right, to utilize Jackson Field more than we're currently doing it? Do you have maybe some pie in the sky ideas or thoughts?
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think back to when they did, it was like, one of the ones was called Taste of Country, and that was something, I know I have friends and family that live out of the area, and they came in for the weekend for that event. So potentially utilizing that space for more, you know, larger scale draws, it would bring more folks to downtown East Lansing and to the restaurants and the downtown scene and the hotels.
Downtown Lansing?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll let that one slide.
Sorry.
All right, do we have any other questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice President Carter.
Yes, I will make a motion for the resolution appointment of Tracy and Kent at large, Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority Board of Commissioners, LEFFA, term to expire on June 30th of 2028.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously. You will actually be on tonight. If you want to stick around, we can swear you in at our council meeting at 7:00.
Okay.
And congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, next, we are going to move on to Item D, Discussion, Resolution on Budget Priorities for Fiscal Year 2627. I know committees are currently working on this. I know I've sat in committees. I would guess that no one is to their finished product yet? So is there, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Sure, this, thank you, Mr. President. This is not, typically, I shy away from trying to do amendments to the budget priorities, they don't have a dollar amount in them, but since I've been working through some issues with some of our residents and some frustration with repeat offenders for things like parking and vehicle, parking vehicles in yards and things like that, maybe appears the fee, fine? Am I saying fine or fees? Which one?
Which one do you want to?
The legal one.
Fines or punishment fees?
Can you turn your microphone on, please, Mr. Attorney?
The fine structure could be altered to discourage repeat offenses, and this is a budget priority to encourage administration to take a look at repeat offense fine structure. So I would move, well, I'd say it out loud right now, we'll do it next week.
Yeah, we can add it.
Okay.
Yeah, we can add it, and then, yeah. Does anyone have any questions on this, that document that was passed around? Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I thought we worked on this at some point with code compliance as far as repeated offender does, increasing the cost. Is this not the same?
I think that was their study that they did, the fee study, which was, was it last year? They did the fee study, but it did, I don't think it changed the actual what was on the list.
Yeah, it realigned, it realigned some amounts that adequately assessed whether the fees we were charging recovered the costs that the city incurred. This is a different, this is fines versus fees.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's why I had to ask Greg in the beginning what I was talking about.
In some of the stuff, like the parking, unregistered vehicle has this graduated system already, so is there any further questions on this? Councilmember Jackson.
Just trying to refresh my memory, is there something that's like per day, per amount that you're in violation for, like a general overall, if you're in violation, it could, I don't know if that's in there, I just wondered.
Sure. There are, there are some violations that can be counted as a daily violation, so every day that you're out of whatever the legal requirement is, that could be counted as a new violation. Those are fairly specific. Parking is not necessarily one of those, well, I shouldn't say that. Violating a street parking requirement would be counted like that, so for every period of two hours, for example, if you're outside of, if you're parking outside of the two-hour limit, every day that you're still there, you're going to get a new ticket. This is more talking about parking violations that are of the land use variety, so on somebody's private property, they're parking improperly off of a hard surface or in a front yard or something like that, that's going to be a little bit different just because of the way that the proofs are made to the court, so that's something to look at. I will also just make the general observation that we are limited for all of our financial penalties, fines, by the Home Rule City Act of $500. So it's a question of where you start and where you go, but we can't go past 500 per event.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yeah, and one of the aims of this is to start the dialogue, so when the new resolution comes back to us, they've had a chance to take a look at some of the stuff where there are repeat offenses. We have some in the trash and grass space. We have, as was mentioned, the parking situation is a little different, it's a repeat violation of the same ordinance, but there's a lot of things out there that we get complaints about that perhaps the fee, the fine, does not discourage the poor behavior.
Correct. It's not their first rodeo. We see that quite often. They'll clean their act up for a month, two months, and then it's right back to it, yeah. Mr. Lawrence, I think you had something?
Thanks. I think Councilmember Spatafor more or less cleared it up, but Councilmember Garza's point, there is a repeat offender fee for, like, premise code violations in grass that's a, you know, in a 12-month period, there is a kind of a revisiting, a repeat offender, but I think Councilmember Spatafor was referring to more parking-related, like the city attorney said, so there is that based in premise code now, the kind of the repeat offender fee.
So you're both right. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, and I thought that not too long ago, Code had the ability Thank you, and I thought that not too long ago, code had the ability to ticket cars that were in violation on the street on top of the police, because it used to always be the police. So wouldn't that kind of coincide?
I think it's parking that can.
It's just strictly parking, no other?
But parking can't, if I'm correct, parking can't do anything with property parked cars, like a front yard parking, that would be code compliance then.
All right. When we talk about this next, I may bring a flow chart. So police are the only ones that can write, police can write violations for anybody breaking the law on a street. Parking services can write violations for anybody parking improperly, and code compliance can write violations for people committing violations involving the use of their property. So there's a world where parking can write a citation for somebody who has parked improperly on their own property or on private property that's held open to the public, and code can write a violation for somebody, either be a zoning code violation or a premise code violation of somebody parking improperly on their, or having too many cars in the front yard, or too many cars on the property, for example.
Clear as mud, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Diagram.
You made it worse.
Well, I'll bring a picture next time.
Yes, thank you.
That would be easier for us.
Perhaps get clarification, that would be great.
And also, I'm sorry, Mr. President, if there is a method to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish already, I'm all for that, but this is, with the budget priorities being due, I wanted to get the conversation started.
Fantastic. Do we have any further discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, we're going to, we've got no other business, we're adjourned, six thirty-one. In fact, do that.